Okay, well, we'll start. I know there are going to be people that will dribble in because sometimes the hunger pains tend to dominate, and I know they want to grab a bite. But I want to welcome you all to this presidential town hall. I have to say that one of the benefits of my time at the National Science Foundation was developing important relationships with a number of people that I, plain and simply, would have never met. And I certainly put Marcia McNutt, the president of the National Academy of Sciences, as one of those people. You know, plain and simply, she is a great scientist. She's an outstanding leader, and I do consider her a luminary in our field. She is also what I consider an incredible role model for a number of women scientists in many scientific fields. Marcia is, I consider her one of our own because she is a geoscientist. And I think it says a great deal that when she was appointed as the next president of the National Academy, and it's an organization that traditionally likes to switch disciplines and not pick the same discipline for the next president, they chose Marcia even though the previous president of the National Academy was Ralph Cicero, who was also a geoscientist. I'm sure Marcia will say that's because geoscientist is the most important discipline in our field. A little bit about her background. She was a professor at MIT of geophysics. She was then moving on to the USGS where she became the director, and in fact was the first woman director of USGS. Moved on again to be president and CEO of the Monterey Bay Aquarium Research Institute. You'll notice I'll say a lot of firsts. She became the first female editor-in-chief of science. And now, really, what I would consider probably her pinnacle, she is now the first female president of the National Academy of Sciences. And you really have to understand how she's broken this glass ceiling because the National Academy was founded in the mid-1800s, so there's just been over like 150 years where there has been no female president. Marcia has received many awards and accolades, too many to mention in this brief amount of time. I do want to mention a few things. In looking at her background, I do find it interesting that she refers to the British Petroleum Deepwater Horizon as her Omaha Beach. She led a group that provided the best estimates of the volume of oil that was erupting from the well, when essentially numbers were being bandied about with really no quantitative information or evidence that they were accurate. And I also found another quote that she made very interesting that I'd like to share with you. This is what she said. "The academy has the job of providing scientific advice to the government, and that's a role that has never been more vital. It's not the role of the academy to say what the policy should be, but it is the role of the science to project the consequences. Advice from the academy could be transformational to help the nation and the world do the right thing." And so, please, help me welcome Marcia McNutt.
Well, thank you very much, Roger, for that introduction. I'm so honored to be here at the AMS meeting. I have to say that I am certainly not qualified to speak to this group because I am actually, in terms of being a geophysicist, someone who has spent my entire career looking down rather than looking up. And I recognized what a shortcoming that was during the California drought, the long part of the drought back a couple of years ago, when there was year after year of no rainfall. But my darling daughter, Ashley, actually thought that that was, for her at the moment, a benefit as she was planning an outdoor wedding at the end of March at a vineyard. And she felt that with the enduring drought, she was fairly safe in planning to have her ceremony out on the terrace of the vineyard and a reception that was going to be outdoors in the vineyard courtyard. But being the practical mother I am, I had ordered some tents just in case, and I had Kathy Sullivan, who was the administrator of NOAA, on speed dial to let me know just in case the weather looked like it was going to take a turn for the worse. So Kathy called me up a couple of days before the wedding, and she said, "Marcia, it's not looking good. Better put those tents up." So we put the tents up, not believing that this horrible drought in California was going to break just in time for my daughter's wedding. And we took all the wedding photos that day, a beautiful day, and I told my daughter, "I'm sorry, honey, we're really going to have to have the ceremony under a tent." She was in tears, having imagined these beautiful, this beautiful nuptial ceremony out on the terrace. But I pulled out my cellphone and pulled up my Doppler Weather App and showed her this horrible scene that was just over the horizon. And I said, "Sweetie, we've got to do this under the tent." So we had all the chairs set up under the tent, and the wedding party came in, marched down the aisle, and just as the minister said, "Dearly beloved," kaboom! The heavens opened up, the thunder started, the rain started pouring down, and fortunately, thanks to great weather forecasting and great weather networks, probably the benefit of many people here in this room, my daughter's wedding was not ruined. So thank you all very much for that. Yes. All right. So today, I was told that a good theme would be to talk about evidence-based using science for evidence-based policy, particularly given all these extreme events that we're seeing. So in looking at this, let me see the arrows here. Is that it? Yeah, here we go. Okay. I don't have to tell this group that disasters are a growing business. Here are simply the weather and climate disasters for 2017, the last year that I could see complete data. And it set a new record for the dollar amounts. Wildfires in the West, flooding, tornadoes, hurricanes. We heard in the last session in this room about Harvey, about, there was Irma, Maria. It was weather freezes that affected Georgia. Some friends of the family had their peach crop affected. So there were a number of events that were billion-dollar events. And certainly, 2018 wasn't any better. We had the huge mudslides in Montecito, California, that seemed to come out of almost nowhere, burying communities that had been established for a long time. There were Hurricanes Michael and Florence, Eloquent City in Maryland that had massive flood come through it, and of course, the California wildfires that whipped through communities with very little warning. So clearly, these disasters are growing in their impact and affecting many parts of the country. So I'd like to begin by talking about disaster risk reduction in three big buckets of how science can help reduce the impacts of disasters. The first bucket is using science to help with predictions. Understanding when a disaster might strike, better pinpointing the precise area of the impact, and then quantifying the magnitude of the disaster. Is this going to be one that is going to be a big rain event? Is it going to be a big wind event? Is it going to be a big event, a little event, et cetera? So those are the predictions. Then, once we're doing a better job of prediction, the next step is doing a better job in gauging what the public response and helping the public actually respond by understanding what messages actually prompt reaction from the public. What methods of communicating are effective? And what factors discourage appropriate reaction? A lot of this, some of this is technological, but some of it is in the realm of social sciences. And then finally, the last bucket here is building resilience to extreme events, and that's using restoration of effective natural defenses, many of which, in many parts of the country, humans have actually degraded. So understanding how we can restore those and use them to our benefit, and also building resilient structures and infrastructure. Because after the disaster is over, getting back to business and people back into their homes is very important. And how we have prepared in the moments, years, and decades before the disaster is so important as to how we weather that disaster. So hazards come in a variety of forms, and the form of the disaster will determine how useful better predictions are of where, when, and how big they are. In some cases, we're already doing very well in those predictions. In other cases, for some kinds of disasters, we may not actually have much hope. So let's take some examples. Floods. For floods, I would say we're actually doing fairly well in predicting flooding now. There are some cases where people are surprised. But let me just give you one example of a flood that was very predictable. And that was one that happened on my watch when I was USGS director. And it was in 2011. Many of you will remember the floods of 2011 because it was when the Ohio River, the Missouri River, and the Mississippi River all were at flood stage at the same time. And there was incredible inter-agency coordination between NOAA, the USGS, the Army Corps, the Bureau of Reclamation, all working together to try to manage those floods. With the Army Corps deciding what should be the releases, and the Bureau of Reclamation deciding what should be the releases from the dams to control how much was backing up to determine flooding upstream versus how much should be released to control flooding downstream. NOAA forecasting the rainfall to know how much more water was going to be flowing into the watersheds. USGS with their stream gauges predicting where the flood crests were going to be at various times moving downstream. And then the Army Corps understanding which levees were going to be breached at what time. And I remember when I got the phone call from the Interagency Coordinating Committee saying, "Now is the time that the Bird's Foot Levy needs to be breached in this area of New Madrid County, in Mississippi County, in the area of the New Madrid floodway, which is in Missouri." And for those of you unfamiliar with this floodway, the Army Corps had, back as part of a Public Works Project back in the 1930s, put up levees to prevent incidental flooding of farmlands. So 80 years before, these levees had been put up so that farmers wouldn't have spring floods every year. When they put up those levees, they buried in the levees explosives. And there was an agreement with the farmers that if the time ever came that those levees needed to be breached to preserve the cities and towns upstream and downstream along the Mississippi, that the farmers would give their blessing for their farmlands to be flooded for the sake of the cities and towns. So we gave the word that the New Madrid, that these levees would be breached, and surprisingly enough, after 80 years, the explosives worked. And the levees were breached, and everyone had plenty of warning that that flood was coming, and the farmlands were all flooded, and the cities upstream that would have flooded were saved because the water had somewhere else to go. So this was a good example of an absolutely known flood, and it was the first time, I guess, in the history of flood control along the Mississippi that every single spillway was opened at the same time. So that was a huge flood year. Now, as another example in the prediction category, tornadoes. Tornadoes, we've got more limited warning for when and imprecise warning of where. It's not like tornadoes, like a flood which is following a river. Tornadoes have a more erratic path. And sometimes they happen in places where we're not expecting them. For example, 28 tornadoes hit Illinois on December 1st, 2018. Now, I grew up in tornado country. I grew up in the Midwest, and we know where the tornado alleys are. And we know when the tornado times of year are as well. And December is not one of those tornado times of year. But this was certainly not unprecedented either. So, you know, clearly, there are these hazards that do have kind of long tails in terms of when they can happen and where they can happen. So better science that can improve the predictions of when and where and how big still could be useful. Hurricanes. Lot of information at this meeting on hurricanes. Hurricanes are one area where I have been incredibly impressed at the improvement of warning of when and the location and the magnitude. I have seen wonderful predictions of, you know, three days in advance of hurricane tracks that have been dead-on in their accuracy of where that hurricane will go. There still seem to be some work to improve how much of the storm is going to be a windstorm versus a rainstorm, et cetera. But this is one area where there has been a lot of improvement in forecasts. One thing that is on everyone's mind is to what extent experience we have with past events can inform our prediction of future events. Are we in a regime where things are non-stationary? And this is a report that came out of the National Academy on the attribution of extreme weather events in the context of climate change. David Titley from Penn State was the chair of this committee. And the report says, "We can only discuss events in a probabilistic sense. One cannot attribute any individual event to climate change. But looking at historical patterns and models for climate influences allows one to make some sort of generalizations about whether it's possible that climate is influencing the magnitude of events, whether they're more frequent, et cetera." One area that the report looked at was hurricanes. They also looked at droughts, they looked at cold snaps, heat waves, et cetera. Attribution for hurricanes is unfortunately hampered by the quality of the record. The quality of the hurricane record does not go back very far, unlike, for example, droughts, which we can use tree ring records, et cetera. Therefore, there was only modest confidence based on the understanding of the physical mechanism. And based on the physical mechanism, it's reasonable to infer that by putting more heat in the atmosphere ocean system, it's going to produce stronger storms and faster intensification. And certainly, we've seen several examples in the past few years of hurricanes that intensified very rapidly right before landfall, that produced impacts that were more than had been forecast as they were approaching land. Wildland fire is one that has been of great concern because of the fact that I have never, I have a home in California, and don't remember, over the many years that I've lived there, the number of deaths that are now being attributed to wildland fire, simply because people have not had the chance to evacuate. The fires have come and intensified and moved so quickly. So there's just been recently very little warning, although, as I say here, the at-risk locations are known. It's in the wildland urban interface. Now, one project that I wanted to mention to you because I think that some of the things they're doing are generalizable, this one is called Wi-FiR, and it's a project out of University of California. And this one is hosted at the Supercomputer Center. And what they've done with this project is, it is a project that has taken data from a vast number of existing systems. So they've taken weather from NOAA, from the, and camera systems, from, for example, University of Nevada Reno Seismological Laboratory, and from utility companies, and from BLM. And they've used data from USGS, and fuels from the landfire program, and satellite detectors from NASA, and air quality, and all sorts of things. So what this is, is a mashup of all sorts of different data sources that they have put together into a number of different services, and then pulled it together into a large prediction to not only look for ignition, but then predict where the fire is going to go. So this is a way, without investing in new sensors, to take, to network together existing sensor systems, and then provide the infrastructure to look for fire ignition, and then predict where the fire is going to go, and use that as an early warning system. So when you think of this, given the reduction in costs of networking and the reduction in costs of computing power, this could be a model for how we could take other observing assets that we have for other kinds of disasters. I'm just thinking things like, my automobile, the windshield wipers automatically turn on when rain hits them. So how could this be used as part of a weather system, for example? And there are other things like that when we look at all the cameras that are looking potentially at what's happening at rivers and other things like that. So that's just a thought here. Then I wanted to mention briefly earthquakes. Earthquakes are probably the least predictable of all of the major disasters that affect humans. There's no warning of when. We have only imprecise understanding of size. We think we know the locations, but then, how many here remember the 2011 earthquake in Washington, DC? Yeah, okay. So I don't think that would have been on anyone's list of an area likely to experience an earthquake, and yet the Washington Monument was closed down for a long time. Here's a picture of what happened to the National Cathedral. You know, huge gargoyles fell off the spires and everything. And if you look at the felt area from USGS Did You Feel It, the area affected by that earthquake was many times larger for a 5.8 earthquake than a 6.0 in California. So clearly, earthquakes on the east, although rare, have a relatively larger impact than a similar earthquake in California. So they shouldn't be trivialized as unimportant. So although earthquakes, we have no warning of when or size, they are one of the disasters for which we've done perhaps the best job of building resilience. And I'll talk about that later. One of the recent steps that has been taken to help with, I guess I'll call it prediction, though it's really sort of in the warning category, is something called Shake Alert. And it's an early warning system for the west coast of the United States. This project, I remember it beginning back when I was USGS director, and has just now gone operational in the LA basin. And what this is, is you can download it to your cellphone so that if there is an earthquake in the region, you will get an alert on your cellphone telling you that an earthquake has occurred. And depending on how far away that earthquake is from your current location, there's a countdown that will tell you how long it is until the strong ground motion reaches you. And that may be long enough for you to exit a building that may not be earthquake safe, to take cover under something safe in case there's going to be falling ceiling tiles or falling, breaking windows, or falling pictures, or whatever, or take other precautions to help save your life or those of loved ones around you. In addition, because of this system going operational, it allows automated shutdown of critical systems. It allows gas systems to shut down so that there won't be fire-following earthquake. It allows transportation systems to stop a train at a station rather than between stations. It allows elevators to automatically stop at a floor rather than between floors. It allows banks to automatically lock their vaults rather than risk that the earthquake will put the vault off kilter so that they can never shut the vault. Hello, robbers. Walk in, take the money, that sort of thing. So although, you know, 10 to 20 seconds warning may not seem like a lot, in the case of having automated system that can allow for the system to make a critical decision, it may be enough. If you're a surgeon, and you have this in your pocket, and you're about to cut open a patient, maybe you decide, "Oh, maybe I won't make that cut." So this can be useful. And it's all based on what was the science And it's all based on what was the science needed to reduce the latency from knowing that the closest seismometer to that earthquake detected it, so that we can get all the latency out of the system to get that alert to the people who need to know. Now, going beyond predictions, knowing where, when, and how big, even very precisely, is of little use without an effective means of alerting the public and allowing effective action. Now here's a typical scene when people are told they need to evacuate. Gridlock on a road. Now, I was happy to see in some of the more recent evacuations that the emergency managers made both roads one-way out of town, and were able to get twice as much traffic going out of town. That was clearly not the case for this particular evacuation, but, you know, simple little things like that can certainly help. There are other things that we've learned from making mistakes that help with alerting people what they need to do and making the right decision. Here's a report from the National Academy, Emergency Alert and Warning Systems: Current Knowledge and Future Directions. And some of the recommendations it made were to use more modern technology to understand how better to geo-target the affected population. In the olden days, warnings were put over the radio and the television. So the report said, no, we've got to use a combination of public and private systems to get to people. Use cellphones, use text messages, geo-target the affected population so that you know exactly who to alert, because otherwise, radio and television is far too amorphous a group that you are talking to, and people don't know, does that mean me, or does that not mean me? And use social science to more effectively craft messages that convey the imminent threat to the population in order to elicit the desired response. And finally, use science to understand the human and other factors that might prevent people from acting in their own best interests. So many times, people have not acted in -- for what's best for them. A perfect example was during Katrina, when you saw person after person who hadn't evacuated sitting on the roof of their house, or trapped in their attic. And what the social scientists went in and found was all of these people were clutching their pets. They were holding their dogs or holding their cats. And the obvious reason was, none of the shelters allowed people to bring their pets with them. And then, when the rescuers, at great peril to themselves, came in with boats and helicopters to rescue these people, they told them that they couldn't bring their pets onto the boats and the helicopters. These people had spent days there trying to save their pets. That's the reason they hadn't evacuated, and now they're told they have to leave their pets behind. Well, many people refused to get in the boat or the helicopter after they had risked everything to save these pets. Those who did thought that they might be able to get back soon to rescue them, only to be kept out of the area for weeks, leaving their pets like this. As a result of that, Congress passed almost unanimously, and the House and Senate never do anything unanimously, almost unanimously the Pets Act that said shelters have to take animals, and when you evacuate people, you evacuate them and their pets. It said pets are part of the family. And that changed this social decision that people had to make, and this very human decision on evacuation. Now, beyond just predictions and warnings, I personally think that one of the most important things that we have to invest in is resilience. They are typically the most cost-effective means of predicting life, protecting life and property, and ensuring continuity of operations. Now, we certainly need the science to tell us where are the vulnerable places, and what is going to happen there, but it takes the pressure off knowing exactly when, if we can make communities more resilient. And here's an example of a resilient community. You can see how they've built green space as a buffer around this river, and the buildings are set back from the first river terrace such that it can absorb some flooding, and it's only, you know, lawn and shrubberies and growth that absorb that before the water can go back. Now, avoiding risk entirely is probably not practical. Here's a map of the US that shows what regions are at risk of various calamities, and this doesn't even include wildfires. It just shows earthquakes, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes. And so unless you want to go to Michigan, or northern Montana, or maybe the Rio Grande part of Texas, you're probably going to be in someplace where there's a risk. Now, it is true that, you know, moving people out of the direct floodplain is very helpful. And I am very disappointed that we allow people to build and rebuild and rebuild in floodplains after they've been flooded out many times. I think that is an unfortunate byproduct of the way we do our insurance programs. But simply saying, well, people shouldn't live in this part of the country, or shouldn't live in that part of the country, is not a practical solution, given all of the areas of the country that are prone to one kind of problem or another. But the National Academy did a report on disaster resilience, a national imperative. This was done in 2012, and it talked about the ability to prepare and plan for, absorb and recover from, or more successfully adapt to actual or potential adverse impacts. This report was actually very well-received and resonated with communities all over the country. It was so much so, and here you have happy dancing people very pleased about this report, that people wanted help in implementing the recommendations. So at the National Academy, we formed this program called Resilient America. And it was to help communities implement the four recommendations in the report, to understand their risk, to partner with communities and stakeholders to measure their resilience, and to share information, tools, data, and experts needed to build community resilience. And so now, we have these four pilot projects that bring science to society and society to science. One in Seattle, Washington, one in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, one in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and one in Charleston, South Carolina, all of which, as you can see from this map, are prone to different kinds of risks. And they are helping communities engage in science-based decision-making. And it's working, not at the federal level, but at the local level with these communities, building trust and community engagement on how they can use science to make decisions, on how they can, first of all, measure their own resilience and increase it. So let me give you just an example here from two communities, Cedar Rapids and Charleston. Cedar Rapids had catastrophic river floods in 2008 that devastated the community. And Charleston has blue-sky flooding, hurricanes, and major rain events which are exacerbated by sea level rise. So the blue-sky flooding is, you know, not from rain, it's from sea level rise and king tides and things like that. In both communities, the program started by conducting a baseline measurement assessment. When you have these events, what parts are more at risk in your communities? What are your points of failure that cause you the most problems? Then they discuss, what would you need to do to harden these, or to make your communities less vulnerable to these events? And what are your priorities for fixing the problems? And then they analyze data from households, from neighborhoods, from special interest groups, from local experts. And the important thing was to involve local experts, because these communities really trusted the process when local people were involved in the science. And then they identified and are implementing solutions to address the priorities. And finally, let me go on to the last part. Roger, in his introduction, mentioned that I was involved in Deepwater Horizon. And not all disasters are natural. Some of them are due to our own foibles. And during a crisis like Deepwater Horizon, we put the science into three different categories. One was, at the bottom here, opportunistic science. And there were many scientists, mostly from the academic community, that got rapid-response grants from the National Science Foundation to go out and just study, what happens during an oil spill? How is the oil affecting ecosystems? What's happening in the ocean, et cetera? So there was opportunistic science that just took advantage of the fact that no one's going to allow you to go out and do a purposeful oil spill to understand the impacts of an oil spill, so let's take advantage of one that's ongoing to learn more about what the impacts are. Then there was the actionable science. I was involved in the actionable science, and that is gathering as much absolutely need-it-now science to help decision-makers make decisions. How much oil is flowing? Do we collect the oil? Do we cap the well? What do decision-makers need to know to make the right decision tomorrow in order to make the crisis go away? But I want to talk to you right now about the strategic science that we did. Now, the strategic science was based on the fact that Gary Mackless, who was the advisor within DOI to the Park Service Director, John Jarvis, came to me when I was down in Houston dealing with the actionable science. And he said to me, everyone is worried about what's happening now and what's happening tomorrow. No one is worried about the long-term legacy of this oil spill, and what we could perhaps be doing better today to prevent the chain of consequences that will lead to an environmental long-term legacy of bad impacts. And I said, you're right, Gary. We need to wall off a special group of people to worry about this chain of consequences, and understanding when a chain might be unfolding that we could intervene in. So we called this the strategic science, and we got together scientists from physical sciences, life sciences, and social sciences. We convened the group within 36 hours of being chartered, and not a single person said no. Everyone dropped everything that they were doing, and convened in New Orleans in order to consider their charter. They considered what could happen, how would you recognize a chain of consequences if it started unfolding, and how would you intervene to stop that chain of consequences and protect the environment, the people, the people's health, and the economy from So the inspiration from this group came from the Office of Strategic Services, which operated during World War II, and was the predecessor to the CIA. The idea was to focus on mission, not process. We looked for expertise. We didn't care that we had to have representation from various agencies. We wanted people who had access to the top leaders, and we wanted PhDs who could win a bar fight. So that's who we brought together. And it was eerie. Almost every prediction from the strategic sciences group came about. Every single one came true. One prediction that they made was that future hurricanes would remobilize oil that sank to the bottom of the Gulf, and would be an enduring legacy of the oil spill. And sure enough, the first hurricane that came through after the 2010 oil spill was Hurricane Isaac, and it remobilized oil from the spill. And there were a number of other things. It was so successful that the strategic sciences group was codified into Department of Interior Operations, and was remobilized for other emergencies. Hurricane Sandy, the Zika epidemic, and most recently, the invasive amphibian pathogen Basal, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. But anyway, for Hurricane Sandy, a number -- an amount of money was put aside for Sandy restoration. And the predictions of the SSG about what would be the long-term legacy of the damage from Sandy was actually used to invest the Hurricane Sandy restoration money, because it was viewed as the scientifically defensible way to use the money to best ensure that there wouldn't be a long-term legacy of damage from the hurricane. So, final thoughts. Improvements in monitoring, modeling, and networking existing sensors, as I showed for Wi-FiR, are paying off in better forecasts. Increased understanding of hazards has translated into community resiliency to lower casualty and damaging. I didn't get a chance to talk about low-hanging fruit being community education, but that's a good example of what's happening in the Resilient America program. Although we can't stop hazards, they don't need to become disasters by actions that we take to use science. So thank you very much for your attention, and I'm happy to take questions.
So as we transition over to the seats, there are microphones in each aisle, and can we put the slide up for the -- ah, there it is. So you can ask your questions, too, via social media. Not only do you go to this site to ask your question, but then the audience can vote on them, and that will help. And I'll try my best to honor those top vote-getting questions. So either way, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay, we'll start right here. Oh, and one other thing, too. I'll ask Marsha, sorry. Is it okay if people ask questions about the National Academy?
Oh, absolutely. I love questions about the National Academy. And please introduce yourself, too.
My name is Tanya, and I'm from Vermont. You mentioned in your presentation that one of the reasons that many people don't necessarily evacuate is connected to their pets, but anecdotal evidence also suggests that there's a large number of people who are somewhat suspicious of the authorities, and that can include some of the scientific community information that they receive. How How do we go about making that less of a problem so that people do in fact pay attention or they don't wait until it's almost too late before they choose to leave?
Terrific question. So I mentioned pets as one example that was learned from social sciences, but there are unfortunately so many other reasons why people don't evacuate. Another reason is too many people have heard all the stories about looting that goes on after evacuation. And if people are, people do the calculus, what is more at risk? My life by staying or if I leave that I am going to lose everything I have to looters? And a lot of people decide, "I want to stay and protect what I have." And by the time they realize it's too late, that everything I have is lost anyway to the disaster, either the fire or the flood, then they're stuck. They're sitting on their roof with everything flooded, or they are surrounded by fire and there's no way to get out. And so that's another problem. Another example of this that we saw in the wildfires in California is homeowners get message after message from scientists saying, "You need to have a defendable perimeter around your house." So people stay, even in an evacuation order, to create a defendable perimeter around their house. They're cutting down brush, they're making a defendable perimeter. Then they sit there with a hose on their roof trying to save their house as the flames are coming in. And finally, they figure it's too late. "I can't outfight this fire." And what happens is, they die. But the only stories that the news covers are the people who actually live doing that, the people who stay and defend their home, and their home is the only one that survives because you can't interview a dead person. And so what happens is, there's a bias in the news reporting of the people who lived, and you don't hear from the people who died. And instead, there's simply a person, a charred body with a hose, and they didn't evacuate, and no one knows the story. So these are other examples, and these are tough calls. These are really tough calls. The time to make your defendable space is well before the fire comes, not during it.
So I do want to transition to social Q and A because there is one that's quickly accruing a lot of votes, and one that I believe in too. And that is disaster impact exposure seems largely related to income and resources. In other words, the communities that are hardest hit are obviously low-income, underrepresented minorities. So how are we going to address these structural societal factors in disaster impact?
So that, there are so many cases of this that the communities that are least able to recover are the low-income ones, Lower Ninth Ward during Katrina. There are other cases too, though. The Montecito one I showed, I don't think there was a home in Montecito. It was probably less than $2 million. And I haven't been there lately, but I'm not sure any of those have been rebuilt, and I'm not sure what the status of those is. You know, it was interesting. I was at, after Katrina, I was at a meeting down in New Orleans that was discussing what should be the future of that community, the Lower Ninth Ward. And this was such a difficult discussion. There were people from the community there, there were people from federal agencies, there were scientists, there were philanthropists who wanted to come in and help rebuild. And here was the way the discussion went. Scientists were saying, "Lower Ninth Ward is below sea level. Why would it be rebuilt?" I mean, this is a natural thing for scientists to say, right? But you had to understand the other side of the coin too. For the residents of the Lower Ninth Ward, this was their community. Most of them were multi-generation Lower Ninth Ward. And to tell them that they had to move somewhere else where they were not with their churches, they were not with their neighbors, they were not with all the social infrastructure that was important to them, to tell them they had to go somewhere else was extremely difficult. So, you know, I'm not sure that there was any easy solution to that. And, you know, in that case, money wasn't really the issue because there were people willing to come in and help rebuild it, but how to rebuild it that you weren't just waiting for another disaster? There's a beautiful map on the internet that shows the dollar amount of disasters in the U.S. over the last 60 years. And that part of Louisiana, far and away, has outstripped any other part of the U.S. over the history, over that history, because of its relationship to sea level and hurricane tracks.
Great. So let's take a question over here. Remember, please identify yourself.
Sure. My name's Dave Jones with Storm Center Communications. We're a small business. And I have a question, Marcia, for you about how the National Academy might be able to help with a challenge. The challenge is that we have worked with federal agencies under the SBIR program, Small Business Innovation Research. We have come up with a very innovative technology that actually can build upon a lot of points that you brought up about getting people on the same map at the same time in a collaborative environment. But the challenge that we've seen is that no agencies seem to know about the SBIR program and how powerful it is when you pass through to Phase Three, which means actually sole source with every federal agency. Does the National Academy, can they help at all in communicating to federal agencies the significance of small business innovation so that can be applied to risk and resilience and putting more federal data sets to work?
Okay. So first of all, I'm a bit surprised to hear that federal agencies are not taking advantage of SBIR. That's really kind of a shock, and it's too bad that your question isn't being heard by gobs of federal people at this meeting, and...
It will be heard, don't worry.
Yeah, another sad part of the shutdown. You know, I urge you to reach out to the Academy's Government-University-Industry Roundtable because that would be the appropriate home for a message like this. The Academy's roundtables are the perfect kind of environment for messages like this to get refreshed between government leaders, industry, and also the advantage of having academia there too is that researchers from academia can help with new innovation that goes both into the industry and also into government.
Thank you.
So let me choose a question that's been asked by social media, and let me rephrase it slightly, and this takes us in a slightly different bend. Essentially, you're advising the administration as one of the audience in Congress. And let's talk about the general topic of climate change and extreme events and the challenges in maybe this administration of a receptive audience. So that's the way I'll queue up that question for the National Academy.
Okay, so the question was...
In other words, you're writing reports that are being, some, the audience is Congress and the administration, and how much that is being received and actually acted on.
Yeah. Okay, so let me give you the big picture of what's happening. First of all, we haven't been asked to do a single report with the double C word in it in this administration, okay? So that's probably very telling. This administration has been exceptionally interested in the Academy's opinion. So I would say that going into 2019, we are as busy as we've ever been. But it's on issues that are, things like the opioid epidemic, cybersecurity, quantum computing. Resilience in its many forms is still a very strong topic, and no one is doubting but that disasters have been a problem, and we need to help people be better protected. And so it's just difficult with this administration to get them to listen if we are, if we talk about it within the, you know, we don't avoid climate change, but we aren't being asked to do things within the context of climate change. We'll put it that way. We don't avoid talking about it in terms of climate change, but they aren't asking about it in that term.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Julia Goldblatt. I'm a recent graduate from the University of Washington, and I just wanted to ask a question. You talked a lot in the last bit of your presentation about preventing anthropogenically-caused disasters from becoming greater hazards over time. And I guess I just wanted to ask a question about superfund sites and basically sites where the hazards are already there and they're already persisting. And we see a really long, drawn-out process in basically reducing that risk and cleanup happening in those sites. And I, my question is, do you see the National Academy informing policy decisions or strategic science strategies being applied to superfund sites to expedite the process of cleanup and then also reduce risk for those smaller communities that have for a long time already been affected by anthropogenic disasters?
Yeah, good question. First of all, before I get to that one, I should have also mentioned, we do have a new program at the Academy on climate change. It's the Climate Communications Initiative, which although we haven't been asked to do new projects in climate change, the Climate Communications Clearinghouse Initiative is an attempt to be more nimble in what we are doing in climate change so we can be more responsive when we do get questions about climate change. And understand that there are many people, even in this administration, who care about climate change. You know, it may not be in the White House necessarily, but in many other government agencies, you know, in DOD, in NOAA, in USGS, many places that they care about climate change information. And so we're doing everything we can, and Amanda here is in charge of that initiative. So we want to make sure that we can get the best, up-to-date information to people as quickly as possible, such that it doesn't require a full consensus report or new workshop or whatever to get people information. And for your question about superfund sites, I'm not sure what new I can tell you about it other than the following. It does seem to me, from what I've seen in Washington so far, that EPA has put a premium on superfund sites, even though there are many other things that they haven't put a lot of focus on. Anytime there does seem to be a new technology or new hope for a new approach to superfund cleanup that might be promising, we do have committees and boards that keep their eye on that, and then they will propose a new study to flesh that out, to propose it to EPA so that we can sort out the science and see if that looks like a promising approach to EPA. You know, if there are new approaches in bioremediation or other ways that can prevent a very costly cleanup from having to go forward or not having much impact. The other thing that we can do is continually take a look at what the health impacts are of sites that haven't been cleaned up, to use better statistics, better longitudinal tracking, that sort of thing, to see whether there are hotspots and other things that have not yet been identified that might take a site and move it higher up on the list that, you know, because of new information. So those are the sorts of things that we can do, and we have boards and committees that are constantly tracking in the environmental area, those sorts of things.
So another question that's come in that everyone that's in atmospheric sciences or meteorology understands is incredibly difficult, is how to convey risk and probabilities to the general public. And so I'm just sort of curious, your take on that? So you're not in our field, but we struggle with this all the time. How do you, some people just don't get it when you say 20% chance of X or Y, and maybe even muddling the message. So what advice do you have?
Well, I'm certainly not an expert in risk communication, but some of the approaches that I've seen others use successfully are to express the probabilities in ways that people internalize personally and innately appreciate because they affect them in their daily lives. So for example, an example might be, I remember when people were talking about how certain scientists are that the CO2 that humans release is causing climate change. I heard one scientist say, "We're as sure that anthropogenic CO2 causes climate change as we are of the link between smoking and cancer." And that seemed to me that, you know, the Rubicon's been crossed in terms of the public understanding that there was so much opposition from the tobacco companies about the link between smoking and cancer. And now people understand, "I better not smoke unless I want to risk cancer." And so to put it in that way really made people understand, yes, scientists really do believe that. And I think as you get to these more loose probabilities, 20%, it's sort of like, well, if there was an 80% chance of rain, you would take your umbrella if you left the house.
Yeah, most would.
Most would, yeah. And if there were a 20% chance of rain, you probably wouldn't. You know, sort of things like that. You know, sort of things like that, but it's hard.
Yes, very hard. So, we have a question over here?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Cliff Mass. I'm from the University of Washington.
Oh, hi, Cliff.
Hi.
We can't see you. We have these lights in our faces.
I'll wave my hand so you know who's asking the question. Anyway, can I ask you a controversial question perhaps that's not asked very often? Has to do with climate change. Now, climate change is a real serious issue, but the problem... One problem is, there is a certain amount of exaggeration and hype in the media about things, and my question is, can that actually undermine our ability to do resilience? And I'll give you an example. Wildfires in California, tremendous problem. Well, climate change may be hype... Maybe zinging it up a bit, but the big issue is probably where people live and electrical systems and things like that. That's probably the real key. And so, people might not want to deal with some of those issues if they think it's all climate change. So, how do we deal with the sort of... I don't know how to put it, but the hype and exaggeration about some of the media and some politicians that might actually work against dealing with resilience? I think this is a serious problem, and it's one that's not talked about very much.
Yeah. So, I guess the way I'd look at that is, there's of course... I have... Yeah, I spend part of my time on the East Coast, and I spend part of my time on the West Coast. There's no problem with wildfire in Virginia, none, and it's a climate difference between East Coast and the West Coast. The West Coast is never going to have a climate like Virginia, never. So, you can certainly say that there... That California has a climate that predisposes itself to wildfire, and it always has. You can go back in the, you know, geologic record of California and know that it's always been subject to wildfire. Is there a case to be made that drought conditions, followed by then, you break a drought and then you have all sorts of brush that grows and other things like that, that this is a sort of worst-case scenario for fueling these fires, is probably not a great situation? Yes, but I'm not sure I've heard anyone... Well, maybe I just don't listen enough, but I don't hear people in California saying, "Oh, if we just cut our CO2, we're going to stop the wildfires." So, I'm not sure, I'm worried that that is going to be the reaction to it, but, you know, I think there are people who would use the wildfires as yet one more opportunity to get climate action, not necessarily to stop the wildfires, but just to get climate action. So, maybe that's more what their objective is.
Okay. Unfortunately, we got to start wrapping this up, and I really want to reserve the last question for me. I've been asking everybody... I'm sorry, very sorry. And I ask this... This is a tough one, but I ask it because our society is struggling with this because... And you'll know where it's going soon as I start talking. We're struggling with putting together, and I think we're on board with a policy for professional misconduct. And we're one of the societies that is trying rapidly to do this. I know AGU is ahead of us, and they've already implemented one, but this is one you've struggled with too for the National Academy, and you've been quoted about how the National Academy views this issue, what about members in the Academy that have been accused of misconduct? So, I'll open that up. We're looking for advice as we try to craft our own policy, and you have experienced this, so we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Right. So, the Council of the National Academy of Sciences has just adopted a code of conduct for its members. We've long had a policy that would cover anyone while at a meeting at our facility. We have never had a policy that would say, cover a member of the National Academy who commits some misconduct elsewhere, not while at one of our events. And so, that's what this new policy does. It has expectations for conduct, scientific conduct, personal, you know, no sexual harassment, other sorts of things that would allow us to take action even if the misconduct doesn't happen in the... While attending one of our events or one of our activities. So, I think that's what's new about this. It also is accompanied by a process and procedures document for bringing forward a complaint and adjudicating the complaint. I did talk quite a while with AGU and with AAAS about their experience, and I would urge you to do the same thing because I learned a lot from talking to them. I think we can take some advantage of the fact that they... Of not having to be the pioneer and learn from what worked for them and what not worked for them, and I think that definitely we might have a smoother going by having been able to learn from their experience.
Thank you so much. We do have one last piece of business, and I think I'm going to stand by the podium to do this. We would have really loved Marcia to be here Wednesday evening. That's when we have our awards banquet, and she is incredibly busy, and we're very fortunate that he is spending the time that she is with us. But EMS is recognizing her, so we're going to do it here, and I'll start by saying, "Being elected as an honorary member is the highest honor the society can bestow upon an individual. Honorary members shall be persons of acknowledged preeminence in the atmospheric or related oceanic or hydrological sciences, either through their own contributions to the sciences or their application, or through the furtherance of the advance of these sciences in some other way. The addition of a new name to the roster of honorary member should be as much of honor to the society as it is to the individual." So, I can't tell you how pleased I am to ask Marcia to join our list of very distinguished honorary members in.
Thank you, Roger.
Please say... I don't have a speaker right now, but please say "Thank you."
Well, as I said, it was an honor just to be able to address this group, but to become an honorary member is amazing. I hope it doesn't mean that anyone will ask me for any weather forecasts, but I am truly overwhelmed by this, and I will display my certificate very proudly at the National Academy of Sciences and remember fondly this opportunity to be here today. So, thank you all very much.